4:20 in the Deuteran Lester. Page 169. Dear refuse of my weary soul, on thee when sorrows rise, on thee when waves of trouble roll, my fainting hope relies. To thee I tell each rising grief, for thou alone can still. Thy word can bring a sweet relief for every pain I feel. But oh, when gloomy doubts prevail, I fear to call thee mine. The springs of composure fail and all my hopes decline. Yet gracious God, where shall I flee? Thou art my only trust, and still my soul would cleave to thee, no prostrate in the dust. Thy mercy's seed is open still, will let my soul retreat. I thumble, attend thy will, and wait beneath thy feet. We welcome everyone this morning in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and the hope that he'll be pleased to be with us and bless us as we gather here with an understanding of the truth that is in his word. I pray that the Lord would bless us to understand that. For an opening hymn, 3:17 in the Deuteran Lester on page 127. 3:17 on page 127. We'll sing that to the tune that's written there, "King of Peace." Lord, how many are my foes? Many they than me oppose. Thou, my strong protector be! Oh, my safety is in thee. Satan and my wicked heart often use their treacherous art. Vain would make my soul to flee, but my safety is in thee. Thou hast said, and thou art true: As I live, ye shall live too. Thou, my rock, wilt ever be! Oh, my safety is in thee. I'm a pilgrim here below. Guide me on the desert through. Lead me as I journey see. Oh, my safety is in thee. Let's bow together. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee that thou hast brought us to this place once again to meet together with thy children. We pray that thou would give us light and strength. Thou would enable us, above all things, to see Jesus, the high and lifted up, exalted King of Zion. We thank thee that... We thank thee that thou hast given us all the many blessings that thou hast poured forth upon us, both natural and spiritual. Lord, give us the heart and the mind to praise thee for them, to thank thee for them, and to know that thou art the giver of every good and perfect gift. Cause us to see thy perfection in whatever befalls us. Cause us to see thy hand and thy mercy in the midst of trouble. What we ask, Lord, for ourselves, we would ask its well for all those who are thy children. Whoever they might be, the world over, you know yours. Wherever thou hast purpose for them to meet together, we pray you'll be in the midst of them. If thou would make their meditation sweet, if they might have a heart and a mind to praise thee above all else. All this, Lord, we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen. You know, there's a lot of... Things that go through my mind as and before I stand up here. Sometimes I wonder... Trying to... I want to look at... I want to read out of John, Gospel of John, chapter 7, verse 40. Many of the people, therefore, when they heard this saying, said, "Of a truth, this is the prophet." Now, what did he say? What was the saying they heard? We're talking about. It's back up to verse 37. In the last day, that great day of the feast, Jesus stood and cried, saying, "If any man thirst, let him come unto me and drink." Did he tell the ones that weren't thirsty, the ones that were satisfied, the ones that were filled to come? No, the ones that are thirsty. They were the ones who he said, "Come, come to me and drink, ye that believeth on me." As the Scripture has said, "Out of his belly shall flow rivers of living water." We can go back to earlier chapter in this same Gospel of John where Jesus was talking to the woman at the well, the Samaritan woman, a woman who normally the Jews wouldn't have anything to do with. He said, "Woman, give me to drink." She answered him neither yes nor no, did she? She said, "What are you, a Jew, doing talking to me, a Samaritan?" He said, "If you knew who it was who spoke to you, you'd ask me for water." She said, "You've got nothing to draw with." He said, "I'm talking about living water." That's symbolic of the Spirit of God. And that's why it says in verse 39 here. "But this spake he of the Spirit, which they that believe on him should receive; for the Holy Ghost was not yet given because that Jesus was not yet glorified." Now, if you want to know where that took place, that took place in the second chapter of Acts on the day of Pentecost, when the cloven tongues of fire came down on the apostles and the 120 that were gathered in that room of the temple. They testified. That's what it's talking about here. When they heard this saying, they said, "Of a truth, this is the prophet." What does that mean? The prophet. There'd been a lot of prophets, hadn't there? Lot of them. Many of them had written their prophecies down, like Isaiah and Ezekiel, Daniel, Michael. Some had people writing them down for them, like Jeremiah. Had a scribe that wrote it down as he spake the word of the Lord. "The prophet" is referring to what Moses wrote when he said, "The Lord's going to raise up unto you a prophet like me." This was the Messiah of Israel. This was the Deliverer. As the Greek translation in the New Testament says it, this is the Christ, the Anointed of God, who was to come forth, not just as a king, but also as prophet. Not just as a priest, but also as a prophet. Is this not the prophet? Yet here, you know, we get the idea based on our modern notions of prophecy that prophecy means telling the future. That's what the prophet's going to do. And many times prophets did predict what the future was going to be. No, they didn't. They told what the future was going to be. There was no prediction. It was sure and certain. What the prophet said by the inspiration of the Spirit was going to happen, happened. Happened just like he said it was going to. And according to the Scriptures of Truth, if we believe the New Testament account, Jesus fulfilled all that was written, both in the law and in the prophets concerning himself. This is the prophet. Others says this is the Christ, the Anointed. Now, you have to ask yourself, did these say that because the Spirit of God stirred them up to see that? Or were they just expressing the desire that they had been taught to have? That your Deliverer is coming? That your prophet is coming? That the one who has the testimony of God is coming? In other words, is it their fleshly expectation or is it a spiritual application that we're talking about here? And far as this verse goes, I don't think it matters. Some said, "Shall Christ come out of Galilee?" He was born in Bethlehem, wasn't he? According to the Gospel of Luke, the decree went out, taxation. And to be taxed, you had to go to your hometown. And that's not just your hometown, your family's hometown. Where'd you come from? Well, these were descendants of David, so they came to Bethlehem. That's where he was born. Now, they went back to Nazareth and Galilee, but he came from Bethlehem. Shall Christ, shall the Anointed One come out of Galilee? Has not the Scripture said that Christ cometh of the seed of David and out of the town of Bethlehem, where David was? They didn't know where he was born. All they knew is he came down from Jerusalem, from Galilee. He came up to Jerusalem from Galilee. Well, I want to look at verse 43 right now. Now, you see what you have. You've got some saying this is the prophet. This is the Anointed One. Others saying, "Nah, you got this wrong. Everything's not lined up." So there was a division among the people because of him. You know what? There is still a division among the people because of Jesus. There is. You've got these on the one side that... In fact, you've got three sides now. Amongst the Jews, you just had two. You had those who believed. We're going to consider these right now that said he's the Christ, he's the prophet, as believers. You had the believers and you had the non-believers. That's pretty simple. That's a division that you could just see right there. There's the line. God's given this much, a sign of who Jesus truly is, had given it to them. Now, Dave, you've got more than that. You've got the ones that say Jesus is the Lord, the Messiah, the Christ, just like they did then, that prophet. And if they say that of a fact, then they get it by the same revelation that God gave to Peter. When Peter said that to Jesus, "Thou art the Christ, the Son of the living God. Flesh and blood hath not revealed this unto you, Simon, but my Father, which is in heaven." That's one group. Then on the far other side, you've got another group that says, "Oh, Jesus never really existed." That's a small group, but they're there nonetheless. You've got people that say, "Oh, this is just a story that was made up. And there's no real hard evidence that Jesus ever even was born. No evidence that he did any of the things that's recorded of him other than what's in the New Testament. We can't believe that." You're right about that. You can't believe it. Not only do you not want to believe it, you couldn't believe it. Because you've got to have eyes to see. You've got to have ears to hear. Then you've got those that said, "Well, of course, Jesus existed. He was a great teacher. Just like Buddha was a great teacher. He never claimed to be God. It was 100 years later before they decided his death meant anything." He never claimed to be God, huh? Well, let's see here. Let's see what he claimed. The high priest. He was betrayed by Jews. They took him to the high priest's house. And the high priest stood up in the midst and asked Jesus, saying, "Answerest thou nothing? What is it these witnesses against? What is it which these witnesses against thee? But he held his peace and answered nothing. And the high priest asked him and said unto him, 'Art thou the Christ, the Son of the Blessed?'" And Jesus said, "I am. I am." So much for that. There's one text that Jesus is actually saying, "Yes, I'm the Messiah. I'm the Anointed One, the Son of the Most High God." Well, more than that. Remember what God... Moses? When Moses asked him, "There at the burning bush, whom shall I say sent me? They're going to ask me. And I don't know... I know that you're the Holy One that's talking to me out of this fire. I see this bush is not consumed. I know that something's going on. You've told me to take my shoes off. It's holy ground. But... But who shall I tell them sent me? Tell them I am sent you. Tell them I am sent you." Jesus is here at this place declaring that he is the Most High God. "I am, and you shall see the Son of Man. Not your grandchildren, not your great-great-grandchildren. You who I'm talking to, high priest. You, counsel. You'll what? You shall see the Son of Man sitting on the right hand of power and coming on the clouds of heaven." I believe he was there talking about the destruction of Jerusalem and his coming back to judge them. Boom, there it was. They saw it, whether they wanted to or not. Then the high priest rent his clothes and says, "What have we need of any further witnesses? Ye have heard the blasphemy. What think ye?" And they all condemned him to be guilty of death. I believe Jesus declared himself to be God there. He didn't wait for the apostle Paul to come along and decide that this Jesus figure must be a God. No, he was the eternal God manifest in the flesh. So all those that want a good teacher, all those that want something like that without the Godhead... Well, there's a division there, isn't there? There's a division. There cannot be unity between those who believe that Jesus is the Son of God, the Son of the Most High, the eternal God made flesh, and those who believe he's just a wonderful little teacher out there. Kind of... You know, if we had to put in modern terms what they think, I'm going to say it like this. I may be doing them a disservice, but I don't think so. He's kind of the Mahatma Gandhi of his generation. There he is. And, you know, they assassinated Gandhi. They killed Jesus. You know, it's all kind of... It's all political. That's the other thing some people think. Excuse me. Some people think about Jesus. He was a political revolutionary. No, he wasn't. Just the opposite. He was the Prince of Peace. Just think with me for a minute. And I know I quoted this in your hearing as much as I've quoted any Scripture in this New Testament. Pilate looks at him and says, "Oh, you're a king then? Oh, you're a king then, huh? Yeah, you look like a king. You act like a king. Yeah, you're a king then." Jesus looked at him and said, "If my kingdom was of this one, then would my servants fight?" But my kingdom's not from here. He did not come the revolutionary that some would have him be. And indeed, that's even the first century expectation of the Messiah is that the Redeemer of Israel would come down from heaven armed with the sword of the Lord and just do battle against them Romans, whip them up, or anyone. whip them up, or anyone else who was oppressing the Israelites at that time. It just so happened it was the Romans, just so happened, y'all know what I mean by that, right? It just so happened it was the Romans. But yes, Jesus was not that kind of deliverer. That's what Savior means. Savior just means a deliverer. He came not to deliver you from temporal oppression. You know, he quoted the book of Isaiah at one time. He says, "The Spirit of the Lord anointed me, preached deliverance to the captives, the opening of the prison to them that abound." Deliverance to the captives. You, me, all of us are captive. We're captives of sin. We may have been captives of Satan, and we are certainly captives of ourselves. You know, there's a hymn we sing sometimes that says, "If I pray or read or hear, sin is mixed with all I do." If I pray, sin's mixed with it. If I read, sin's mixed with it. If I hear, sin's there. But for the one that believes in Jesus, for the one who has had the Son of God revealed to him, he is no longer captive by it. Because Jesus is the deliverer of the captive. And he took and led captivity captive and the sin that easily beset us and the sin that rose up against us and separated us from God Almighty. What became of it? He took it out of the way. He covered it with his blood. He washed us pure and clean. And even though we still are plagued with it, we're not held captive by it. We've been released. He has loosed us from our sins with his blood. He's washed us. He's cleansed us. So that when God now looks upon his children, he sees not the vile sinner that we see when we look within ourselves, rather he sees the righteousness of Christ. He sees his own righteousness. Because it's been given, imputed to us. Look here. Pause here. Therefore, by the deeds of the law shall no flesh be justified in his sight; for by the law is the knowledge of sin. But now, the righteousness of God without the law, or apart from the law, probably be a better translation, is manifested, being witnessed by the law and the prophets. You see, the absolute righteousness of God, that holiness which is intrinsic in him, is not the righteousness of law. Neither is it righteousness that comes by obeying the word of the prophets. It is beyond that. It is greater than that. The law and the prophets only witness to God's righteousness. That's something that some people can't see. They want to have a legal rule to walk by. And they say, "Oh, well, yeah, see, you may be saved by grace and all that good stuff, but you still got to walk according to the law." No, no, the law's a reflection of the righteousness that's been given his people. Let's go on with that just for one more verse before we keep going here. "But now the righteousness of God without the law is manifested. It's shown. But it's been witnessed to by both the law and the prophets, even though neither of them contain the full righteousness of God, even the righteousness of God by the faith of Jesus Christ unto and upon all them that believe." Where you getting that? That the righteousness that God's children have is a righteousness that comes by the faith of Jesus Christ, and it comes to all them that believe, and it is greater than the law and the prophets who could only, which could only witness to that righteousness. It could only say, you know, "This is what God's shown you is right and good." But God's righteousness itself is greater than I am. The prophets the same way. So righteousness that delivers us from sin, from its condemnation, from its power, from its authority. And you can't get that anywhere else but from Christ Jesus. Can't get it anywhere else. It's his righteousness. It's by his faith, and it's given to his people who believe. Yes, that sin is done away in Christ, even though it's still in us. God doesn't see it. Because you've been covered with a robe, a fine linen. Book of Revelation says, "Is fine linen clean and white, which is righteousness, the righteousness of saints." So yes, you were captive by sin. You were delivered by Christ. Satan is a walking, is a roaring lion walking about, seeking whom he might devour. I've got news for you, Satan's real. It's not the bad part of man. You know, there's some people that actually believe that the devil's the bad part of man and God's the good part of man. If that's the case, then you're Satan, and I'm Satan, and we're all Satan. Because we ain't got no good parts. Unless God gives it to us, it's all evil. But the power of Satan is destroying. "The strong man hell-captive, whom he would. But when one that was stronger than him came, he destroyed him that hath the power of death, that is the devil, as far as God's children go." Oh, yes, he's still out there. He's still roaring about. He can't devour you, though. He may plague you, he may tempt you, but he can't devour you. He doesn't have you. I watched part of a movie. I don't know why I do things like that, but I do supposedly on the, what happens after the so-called rapture. Had some good people in it, Gary Busey, Margot Kidder, I mean, they had some stars. Had devil saying. There was devil manifest in the Antichrist. He says, "Yes." Someone who's supposedly a Christian says, "Don't you know that you've already lost?" He said, "I haven't lost. I'm going to get every soul I can, and I'm going to take them to the lake of fire with me, and I'll laugh, because every soul that I get down there is one that God couldn't have." And I'm sitting there thinking, "My goodness. My goodness. Do we really believe in a God who is so weak that one of his creation can thwart his plans for people? Satan doesn't reign in hell. He hasn't reigned in hell. No, that's not his realm. That's God's realm. He didn't create it as a place for Satan to have authority and dominion. He created it as a place where Satan would be imprisoned, if you will, punished, whatever, however you want to say it. And that forever. Every one of God's children is redeemed by Jesus Christ. The powers of darkness have no power over them, because the power of light has come to them. Power of God in Christ. And all that fine kind of will worship, it, talk like that should have no place among the Christians. No. The power of God is exercised for good for his children. And as he gives them belief, and he gives them righteousness, and he gives them faith, he's delivered them from the power of the devil. And only those whose names were not written in the book of life of the Lamb will wonder and will be found guilty. No sacrifice for them. Just as there was no sacrifice under the law for the Gentiles, there's no sacrifice for Christ for them, by Christ for them. They are of their father, the devil. They are his emissaries, if you will. Sin, Satan, and self. We're captive to the lust of the flesh. Ain't talking about just sexual immortality when I say lust. Some people, that might not have any bearing at all on what they want. Who knows? They might want an example of... I don't know. Why, some people want, they might want an example of every model Cadillac from the 30s that was ever made. And they might lust after it. There's a line in an old country song, "Dark as a dungeon," says, "Like a fiend with his dope, like a drunkard with his wine, a man will have lust for the lure of the mind." We're prisoners of our own lust, our own desires. Might be a better way to say it today. We're a prisoner of our own desires. If those chains have been broken by Christ. Oh, yes, the old man rises up from time to time, and we have problems. We think we got things under control. Oh, yes, I mean, pat yourself on the back. I'm doing good. Oh, you are, aren't you? Be withhold my hand of grace for this second. Let's see what you do. And our old self comes to the fore again. We fall. Like David. That's a good example, isn't it? You know, people talk about his sin with Bathsheba, and rightly so. But what about his sin of numbering the people? I didn't find out how many soldiers I got here. Lord said, "It didn't matter. You're going to have everyone you need, because I'm going to supply you with exactly what's necessary for the fight that you have to do. I better number them. I know more than God. I got to be prepared. Take no thought for the morrow. It's a vision for the days, the evil thereof." Not the good thereof, the evil. I always, I always wondered about that. Why'd he say it that way, the evil thereof? Because if his hand didn't uphold in it, you're going to have nothing but evil. Evil from within, evil from without. And the Lord just going to... He's just going to show you how little you can do, how nothing you are without him. Now, there's a division, aren't there? And then you've got the worst of all, in my opinion. Well, I figured them that denied Jesus ever lived was the worst of all. No, I don't think so. You've got those who have a pitiful Jesus. I don't know of any other way to describe it. But a pitiful Jesus. And you can hear it in pulpits all over the country, indeed, all over the world. Jesus done all he can do, now it's up to you. That's a pitiful Jesus. He's done all he can do, now you've got to do something. Well, listen. What have I got to do? You've got to take the first step. Friend, have you read the Bible? "Oh, yes, I know my Bible. You know who Mephibosheth is?" "Who?" "He was lame in both his feet, and he couldn't walk." "That's me. I can't take the first step. I can't take the first step. What good is this to me if I've got to take the first step when I can't do it?" "Well, just hold your hand up. Friend, have you heard of Lazarus, the brother of Mary and Martha?" "Why, yes." "What happened to him?" "He died. Guess what? Not only am I lame in both my feet, I'm dead as Lazarus. You might as well be in a tomb. I can't raise up my arm." "Well, just pray to the sinners, I can't talk." "You don't understand. I'm dead in trespasses and in sin. And I not only can't, but I have no desire to do any of that." but I have no desire to do any of that." "But Jesus will meet you halfway." "No, he won't." "Let me tell you what Jesus will do. He'll see you in a horrible fit. He'll see you in a miry flame. And he'll reach down his hand, and he won't ask you to grab a hold of it. He'll just pick you up by the hair of the head and pull you out of there, set your feet on a rock, and that rock is himself, and he'll establish your goings. Because now, you're not gonna be going in your way, and you're not gonna be going in a legal way, but you're gonna be going in a way of faith, because that's what he's giving you. Faith, faith. That's it. The righteousness of God, which is by the faith of Christ." Oh, look at these divisions. We could probably make them even finer than that, but we don't need to. Those that have been taught of God, who have seen the glories of their Redeemer, who have felt the depravity of their heart, understand. And they don't want anything to do with those others. No. They're like those Grecians that came, I believe it was Philip, had said, "Sir..." Excuse me. "Sirs, we would see Jesus." That's what you want. Not Moses, not Elijah. Remember when Jesus took Peter, James, and John up on the mountain? He was transfigured before. I mean, his garment was white. He shone with the glory of God. And there was Moses, and there was Elijah speaking with him. And good old Peter says, wakes up out of a sleep, sees Moses and Elijah there. Now, won't you tell me how he knew that that was Moses and Elijah, considering they died hundreds of years before he was born? But he did. He said, "Lord, it's good for us to be here. Let's make three tents. We'll put up one for you, oh, one for Moses, one for Elijah. Oh, yeah, we'll put one up for you too." And a voice came from heaven, the voice of the eternal God, that said, "This is my beloved Son. Hear ye him." And the clouds parted, and they saw Jesus only. No more Moses, no more the law, no more the prophets, but Jesus alone. Yes, there's a division. Because some know about the Son of God. Some don't wanna know about the Son of God. Some do know about him, and others know him. And that's where we are today. Yes, it is, just like it was then. There was a division then, and there's been a division ever since. God's people, God's people have not just seen with the eye, they've experienced him in their hearts. They know that revelation. And they may sometimes have doubts, and they may sometimes have fears. But they wouldn't cast away that for all of the gold of Ophir or for the cattle on ten thousand hills. Because it's real. It's real. Well, I think I'll stop, and if we'll bow together, go before the Lord in a word and prayer for dismissal. "Those kind and righteous heavenly Father, give us that fresh sight of the Messiah as our righteousness, as our all-in-all, as our peace, as our head. May we be blessed to look to him for all things. Be with us now as we depart, strengthen our faith, increase our hope. Give us mercy. That we have safe journeys as we travel. And may we be blessed to come together again. In the glorious name of Jesus we ask. Amen."